7:00 PM and tonight we are in regular session. Our first item of business is establishing a quorum and all members of council are present. We next have communications and do we have any communications from council members? So, Councilmember Crowe. Yes.
Thank you, President Nisley. I just wanted to announce that the Environment and Sustainability Commission will be meeting this Wednesday evening on Zoom. We have not met in two months, so we are looking forward to getting back to work virtually. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Any other communications from other council members? Okay. Tonight, we're joined by our Treasurer, Mary Ann McClure. And, oh, and did you, I'm sorry, before we do that, Councilmember Claude Felder, did you have a comment?
No, forgive me, I was just waving to Mary Ann McClure, but...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to keep track, trying to keep track of everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, well, with that, welcome Treasurer McClure. If you want to report out on the interest report that we received for the months of January, February, and March.
Sure. I'm glad, excuse me, that you have it in front of you. As you all know, the investment earnings are down across the board, and we're only at about 15% of the projected amount. So, the one increase in that is the CD at Chase just matured, and that's about $50,000 of the interest that'll come in in May. So, it'll probably come closer to the 50% at the end of June, and I have three other CDs that are due in the fall from Hocking Valley Bank. So, it's gonna be a close, it's gonna be close to the estimate, probably a little below is my best estimate right now, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I don't know if you have questions about anything in particular, but...
Thank you for sharing the information. Any questions from council members? None that I see. Well, it's good to see you, and thank you for making the report. We'll look forward to the end of, then, September, then, for that update and hopefully be closer to on target with the interest income.
I hope so, too. Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate all your work. Thank you so much. Okay. All right. We'll move on now to communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason.
No communication.
Okay, and I don't, oh, and Auditor Hecht.
No report.
Okay. And Mayor Patterson.
I have a few items to report tonight, President Nisley. First of all, let me start with some of the, some of the good information that I've got for everyone. The Merchants National Bank, which is on Stimson Avenue, returned to the city a check for $2,138 for property acquisition and easement on the Stimson Avenue project. So, they have, they're sending it back to the city, which I really applaud them for doing this. Again, they weren't asked, and it came as a surprise to Director Robert Hetty. Scott Thompson, if you could please bring up the slide deck that I asked you to share with council and the viewing audience. Just to, wanted to show everyone that the city, for a couple of years now, has received a community energized, energized community grant from NOPEC, Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council. And we, the first go, we purchased solar lighting for our bus shelters. This most recent round, we purchased these two solar personal device charging tables, umbrellas. The tables existed, we had those at the pool, but we had these made to fit with our benches. What's really great about these is that they are portable. So, is there, if there's need elsewhere in the city of Athens, and certainly I recognize that they're sitting in a closed pool area right now, but hopefully as things move into the new normal, that we will be able to use these elsewhere in the city and provide an asset for people to charge their cell phones while they're sitting in a shaded spot. So, thank you, Scott, for showing that. I will be sending a letter on to the state senate, really asking for them to support Senate Bill 310, so that monies do work their way down to the local, to the municipal level. And hopefully, we can get that through in a positive way. So, that will be going out shortly. There is a boil order in effect for the city of Athens. This is for the ridges. That boiler, boil order went into effect at 3:00 PM today and will be in effect through 4:00 PM tomorrow. Again, that is up at the ridges. The last thing, President Nisley, and thank you for bearing with me on this, but I felt I couldn't not say something. So, let me read this. "As the mayor of the city of Athens, I condemn, in the strongest possible terms, the actions of the Minneapolis police officers who killed George Floyd. There is no excuse or justification for the type and level of force used by those officers. Moreover, there is no excuse or justification for the repeated injustices that people of color have had to endure. While most police officers share in my outrage and do not support such unconscionable behavior, these repeated murders of unarmed black men and women have revealed the deep-rooted racism that is still alive in our country. As much as it is possible for me, a white man, to emphasize with the anger and fear underlying the many demonstrations happening across our country, I want my community to hear me loud and clear that not only do I believe like black lives matter, but black lives matter to me. While Athens strives to be an inclusive community, we can do better. I can do better. White people can and must do better. Recognizing that this is a lifelong endeavor, I recommit to explore my own biases, learn about the ways my privilege has maintained this status quo, which I am seeking to disrupt, and find ways to more actively and intentionally use my role as an elected leader to speak on behalf of all, all of our community members. Further, I will be asking all of my department heads to join me in this effort. This is going to require us to be explicit in our intentions, to facilitate and support uncomfortable discussions, and to do the hard work that is necessary to make positive change in our beloved city of Athens. Thank you, council."
And thank you for sharing that statement with us.
You're here.
Okay. And I think that, from the nods of council members, that you can see that you have our full-hearted support on this. Absolutely.
Yep.
Changing the subject slightly, we will move on to the business at hand tonight for us, which are our ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 6620 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for small city program funds for program year 2020 and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. At this time, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 06620.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't see who. Is it Councilmember Snedley that seconded? Yes. Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of 6620.
Thank you. And, and this is for a, an opportunity for BPW to apply for a $2 million small cities grant, and this would be put towards construction of a single-lane roundabout at the intersection of 682 West Union and State Route 56. If, if successful, this would only be a 5% match for the city, which is $100,000.
Okay. Thank you. And do we have any comments or questions from council member or administration? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? Okay. The ordinance, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 6720 is an ordinance to renew the existing city income tax of 10 hundredths of a percent, .10, per annum for a period of 10 years for street improvements, and authorizing the question to be placed on the ballot at the next general election to be held on November 3, 2020, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 06720.
I'm sorry, we have a second from Councilmember Graves. Yes, thank you.
Okay, and thank you. And so, this is, it's funny, I had the opportunity to answer a question at one of the forums for the League of Lemon Voters during the last November election cycle, where they asked if council members would raise taxes. We don't, we don't have that opportunity to do that, but what we do have is the ability to put tax levies on the ballot and allow the public to make that decision. And that's what we're doing here. So, this is a renewal, and this is, this would be the, the third, third decade, if this was successful, this would be the third decade where we'd have this important funding stream that has helped, helped so many of our projects come to completion throughout the city.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? All right, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for first reading. 6920 is an ordinance authorizing the 2020 Street Paving and Repairs Project Number 333 and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nisley, thank you. So, we did discuss this very briefly at last council committee meeting for transportation. And I will say at this point, I have not yet connected with Director Hetty. The request that I have received from a couple of other council members is we would like to have an idea of what the street list is. I believe that since we were, since things have been a little bit different this spring, and we were unable to have a streets tour, I do feel that we have, we're a little bit, we're a little bit behind on some of the information, so I would like to make that request that if the street list exists, that it could be distributed to council so that we have a good idea of what is, what's, what's being working, working on moving forward. But this is a half million dollars going into, going into our city streets and paving and, and street repair for this, this 2020 construction year.
And did I see that Mayor Patterson had a comment?
Nope. Yep.
So, I spoke with Bob Hetty at the tail end of last week, and, and that list, he has recently modified it just a little bit, and you guys, council will have that in your hands likely tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. We'll look forward to seeing the list then. 7020 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement with the Athens County Commissioners as applicant and grantee, if funded, for submission of an application to the Office of Community Development, Ohio Development Services Agency, known as ODSA, for the program year 2020, Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, known as the CHIP Program, introduced by Councilmember Graves.
Thank you, President Nisley. Yeah, this, we did discuss in committee last week, and this is the program that has, has brought approximately $350,000 in CHIP program funds to the city. These funds are, are used for home repairs, rehabilitation, down payment assistance, and some, also new home construction in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. So, clearly, a great program for our city, so we would certainly want to authorize participation once again.
Okay. And any comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to ordinance 7120. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids for construction of the wastewater treatment plant dewatering improvements project number 320, introduced by Councilmember Graves.
Thank you, President Nisley. And yes, this is exactly what President Nisley just read. Our engineering, the Public Works Department have put a lot of effort into finding the most economical way for the city to de-water our waste, and they have developed a plan for an addition onto an existing building, and this will, in the long run, save us money because we will not need to pay an outside company for dewatering services. So, this ordinance will authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids for construction of the dewatering equipment project, and that's, that's the gist of it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, none, we'll move on to ordinance 7220. An ordinance authorizing design engineering of the city sewer system improvements project number 330, introduced by Councilmember Graves.
Thank you again, President Nisley. And this one, I, I will read the whereas's and sections, so everyone knows what we are discussing here. Whereas a 0% EPA DFA design loan has been awarded in the amount of $1,156,604 to cover design fees, and whereas a 0% EPA DFA construction loan can be applied for after the design has been completed, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio. Section 1, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into contract for design engineering of the city sewer system improvements project. And the 2020 appropriation ordinance 013019 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $1,160,653 to sewer fund 750.637 TC 500, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. And the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $1,160,653 from the sewer fund for design engineering services.
Any comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 7320. This is an ordinance amending ordinance 13919, authorizing construction and construction engineering services and property acquisition for the Kimes Reservoir Project, introduced by Councilmember Graves.
Thank you, President Nisley. So, at Kimes Water Reservoir, we need to build a booster station, and through pretty careful analysis of the options, a location has been selected, and this ordinance will authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts with the lowest and best bidder for construction and construction engineering and property acquisition for the Kimes Reservoir Project. The property acquisition is the amended portion. We had previously authorized this, but because of a change in location, we are adding the property acquisition. And the Service Safety Director is further authorized to expend up to $1,168,450 for said project. This new amount is an increase from the previously approved amount of $968,450. And again, this is for the booster station at Kimes.
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Reisner?
Yes. In this time of budget constraints, is this project absolutely necessary at this time? We're talking millions of dollars here.
I, I believe that it, that it is pretty essential, and this is, is going to allow us to, to improve service and perhaps increase or broaden their service by, on that side of the city. And this is, this is, the Kimes Reservoir has been something we've been talking about. It's been in the works for, for quite some time. And...
I know.
Councilmember Fall has a comment.
I think Councilmember Fall, and then I bet Auditor Hecht has some information, too, on maybe perhaps this being proprietary.
Right. Yeah, part of this is also to, because the rehabilitation will help the Kimes Reservoir change over their water, and it helps to reduce the amount of toxins that could be potentially in that volume of water if it doesn't get recirculated and reused. And so, this has been something that's been on the books for quite a while, and actually, Andy Stone was, was really pushing for it because of this water quality issue, which affects the South Side. Thank you.
Okay. And Mayor Patterson?
Just to further qualify that, the water is fine, but it would allow for cycling of that water at a higher rate. It also is in alignment with future growth in the city or development in the city for potentially having new housing or housing options in that area by having this booster station down there. Member Reisner, it, it really opens up and affords that opportunity for there to be some land development in that, that particular site and around that site. We have been talking with property owners, a property owner down there, and there are some potential prospects for the not-too-distant future.
Okay. And Councilmember Fall? Yes?
Well, and, and to also put it on the board is that this falls in line with our long-term and short-term regional income enhancement plan, both the update and the original one. So, it's been, it's not like something we just thought of. Thank you.
No, I, I realize that, but then, you know, the coronavirus sort of threw a monkey wrench into everything, and I think we're sort of obligated at this point to look at everything that's come before us, even though it's been planned for many years. And believe me, I'm all for anything that develops the South Side because that's my ward, but at the same time, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we're looking at some leading times ahead. And yeah, the money may be proprietary, but there may come in some reason that we may need to keep the funds for a while. I'm just throwing that out there because if I don't mention it, somebody else will. So...
Okay. Thank you.
And just for clarification, the increase in order to acquire the property from the Kimes Center is 200,000, like, for, for changes to this project over what it was. So, the, the, we were planning on, on the vast majority of this expenditure for a long time, that, that's been in the plans.
It's a shame they can't donate the property to us.
You could ask.
Well, I just did.
Okay. Thanks for the comments. Okay. Any other information or comments? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to ordinance 7420. This is an ordinance affirming the city of Athens will pick up a statutory required contribution to the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System for the employees of APSME Local 2403 pursuant to Internal Revenue Code Section 414H2, introduced by Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you, President Nisley. The title of this pretty much says it all. The ordinance itself is rather lengthy because of the requirement to have all the necessary language in for the IRS. This is really just a little bit of housekeeping. We were made aware of the necessity for an ordinance from the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System, and they pointed out that they needed, that we needed a valid ordinance with all of the appropriate language. So, I will not be reading the entire ordinance, but again, this is for the, the, the state and the county and the municipal employee union, Local 2403. And this is just affirming what we've already agreed to in the contract, which is basically, basically the city's contribution to their retirement accounts. Yeah, I think that's all that we need to say, the, the full ordinance is here, and it is for those employees that are part of APSME 2403. Thank you, President Nisley.
Thank you. And as I understand, this is like, it's a, it's a documentation procedure that we need in place for the city and came about as a result of an audit by PERS. So, we're, once again, we're complying with, you know, the different regulations that, that they find are necessary. Yes, auditor Hecht, yes.
You're correct in what you're saying. Everything is, that's been said is correct. And I just want to say, this is how we've been doing this for a very long time, but we haven't had this type of audit before. So, even though the state audits all of our books, they don't always look as closely to some things, so we're just passing, as you said, President Nisley, an ordinance stating, officially stating that, that we're doing this. So, we, we pick up the city share and we withhold the employee share and send it all to PERS.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to ordinance 7520, and this is an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an inter-fund transfer, introduced by Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to note that the next three ordinances, including this one, I will be explaining them and then asking for a motion to suspend the rules. All three are necessary for us to prepare for the budget reality that we are in, and the sooner we can have them approved, the better we will be to manage the budget hits that we are experiencing. So, 07520 is the appropriation ordinance, and I'd like to read this ordinance.
And before you do, why don't we go ahead and move to suspend, and then we'll get that part carried in and be suspended.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules so that we can have these done quickly and be able to manage the city's budget in this emergency time.
Second.
We have a second for many. Councilmember Reisner, seconded, all those in, so we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Opposed? Nay? The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you, President Nisley. So, 07520, read section 1. The 2020 appropriation ordinance 13019 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sum: $100,000 to Transportation Fund 214, transaction code 600, for transfer, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Section 2 indicates that this transfer is going from the Transportation Fund to the General Fund. So, the auditor is hereby authorized to make the following inter-fund, inter-fund transfer from Transportation Fund 214 to General Fund 101, the amount of $100,000. And again, this is, these are monies that are, right now, not needed in the Transportation Fund, and that they can help us in the budget crunch we are facing by being transferred into the General Fund. Section 3 of this ordinance is a transfer necessary at the community center in order to process some refunds due to citizens. The 2020 appropriation ordinance 13019 is further amended by decreasing Community Center Fund 271, transaction code 500, equipment by $10,000, and increasing, transaction code 600, refunds by the same amount, and decreasing and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. So, this is simply taking money that's already in the community center from one So this is simply taking money that's already in the community center from one fund for equipment that is not an emergency equipment, that can be used for the necessary refunds. I would like to make a motion to approve 07520.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Grace, okay. We have a motion and second for approval of the ordinance as described by Councilmember Crowell. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Fall?
First, I want to say thank you to the mayor and the administration and Kathy and all the department heads for churning these numbers out. This is harsh, and on top of everything else that we've been going through in this city and the community and our larger community, it's, it's harsh. It's really devastating. And so, thank you for the, that work using your heart and your mind. Thank you.
And, and I believe that this one in particular for the transportation is also in part because HAPCAP received a larger grant, and so we need to thank them too for releasing us from some of our cost share obligation because of that. So, so thank you. Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of 7520. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is passed. Thank you. The ordinance is approved. Ordinance 7620 is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce the 2020 appropriations in order to maintain a sound financial budget, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. Again, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 07620 in order to deal with our financial emergency.
Second.
And second by Councilmember Claude Felter. Motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the rules have been suspended. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. Again, I'd like to echo Member Fall's comments about the hard work that the city administration, the auditor's office in particular, has been doing to keep a close eye on the budget and to find a way to keep the City of Athens in the best position as possible. And this ordinance, like the next ordinance, as well as a resolution later in tonight's meeting, deals with that preparation. And I'll read this one. Whereas the City of Athens, Athens is anticipating a substantial loss of revenue due to the coronavirus pandemic, and whereas all city departments were requested to reduce their budgets, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio, Section 1, in order to maintain a sound and financial budget, the auditor is hereby authorized to reduce the 2020 appropriations in Personnel Services, transaction code 100, by $310,400, and capital outlay by $712,100, and any reductions and other account lines that may be necessary through August 2020 that are consistent with those provided by department heads. So this gives us a total of about $1,022,500, not including any, any additional reductions in order to be prepared to deal with the budget reality that the city is facing. And I wanted to thank the auditor for doing the hard work to find these amounts and, and put them together for reducing the 2020 appropriations. And I'd like to make a, yes, Member Claude Felter?
I'm curious, has it been decided at this time what that 300,000-plus cut to the Personnel Fund will mean? Are people getting laid off?
Can we, tell you what, before we have any more discussion, can we go ahead and have the motion and second to approve? And then we'll commence with the discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 07620.
Second. And a second by Councilmember Smedley. Thank you. Now we can go ahead.
So Auditor Hecht, would you like to answer? Member Claude Felter?
Sure. Me or the mayor, either one could. Yeah, the cuts we're making right now are to avoid actual people cuts. A lot of it has to do with, and this is a good question. I was asked this by Councilmember Smedley before tonight. Also, our overtime costs that we have a lot, we had a mild winter, and then we have not had fests and all kinds of events, move out, move in, stuff that we usually have that require a fair amount of overtime, and we just haven't had those expenses. So we're taking that out of the budget so that money can be freed up and used somewhere else right now. So no, we haven't eliminated any positions. I don't know what the administration might be planning, but I, I believe everyone's intent is to try to keep everyone that we have right now on board and just make cuts otherwise so we can, can keep going and, and are in a good position to pick business up again in the fall when we need it.
And I see we've got a comment from Mayor, Mayor Patterson, and then Councilmember Claude Felter. We're going to return to you.
To kind of add to what the auditor was just saying, is that when we have retirements, we're not running out and immediately filling that particular position. And something that we, one of the initial conversations that I had with my staff was to reduce overtime, reduce overtime. There's still, it's going to be emergency overtime that you can't, that you can't anticipate, clearly its name, and therefore we have to have things like that continue to move forward, but trimming down overtime elsewhere. So that's what you're seeing from personnel. The, the other thing, just to share, is that what we're tracking and watching very closely, obviously, is revenues from now through the summer into the fall and for the rest of the year, you know, to be clear. But at this point, making these changes now, the ones that we've made, nobody has been furloughed, nobody has been laid off, but we certainly are watching those revenues. And we'll be watching these revenues for more than 2020. We're going to be watching these revenues, and I, so I want council to be clear on this, is that we're, we're certainly going to have to watch these revenues into the spring and summer of 2021 because there will likely be faculty who are not returning because they have been given their one-year termination notice. So we're, we're watching everything very, very closely and being as frugal as possible with our income tax revenue that's coming in.
And Councilmember Claude Felter, and then Councilmember Smedley, and then Councilmember Kotsas.
Excuse me. I, I, I also wanted to give my thanks to Auditor Hecht and Mayor Patterson and the whole city administration for trying so hard to be very careful about how to save money for the city's budget, and I very much like the fact that you don't want to lay people off. So thank you very much for trying to save jobs.
Okay. Councilmember Smedley?
Just to share with all of council, I had also asked Auditor Hecht about the capital cuts and what those will mean, and are those permanent or are those things that will be postponed? And she, just to share with all of council, she did mention that those are postponed costs, that they will be readdressed once revenue comes back or once we're at a better position. We know where we are with the budget, so just to share that with all of you. And thank you, Auditor Hecht, and Mayor.
Okay. And Councilmember Kotsas?
Thank you, President Isley. And, and this is for Mayor Patterson, as, as you were, were talking about the, about the payroll and not, not necessarily replacing some, some employees. I was also wondering if our mild winter kind of put us ahead of the game, not having so many pipe failures with freeze thaw and snow removal.
It, it certainly hasn't hurt it any. You know, another thing, Councilmember Kotsas, that I'm glad you raised that point, is something that's really helpful on the water delivery end as well as the sewer service is, clearly, we have been, you know, down a rather substantial portion of our population here in the City of Athens for longer than we normally experienced in a non-COVID-19 year. So that, that has reduced load on our system. So that and the, the temperatures this past winter have certainly not hurt us. Roads as well, you know, for our typical flare-up of potholes during the winter. We didn't suffer as many this year as we had in the past. And then, again, traffic, reduction in traffic certainly has a positive effect on your roadway surfaces, so. That's not to say there aren't potholes out there.
And back to Councilmember Crowell, yes, your, your ordinance here.
Just to add more on to that, as I know the Director Hedy remarked that we saved quite a bit in salt this year. We did not have to use as much salt, so there's some savings there as well.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for all the comments and questions. Yes, Auditor Hecht?
Just a quick comment is, we should also thank Service Safety Director Tom Pyle. He worked very hard with the department heads to put this list together, he and the mayor both, and he deserves a lot of credit for that. And another thing that should be reassuring to everyone, but I believe I've already said this to the administration, I know I have to, Tom, is I'm not going to go in and make cuts without talking to the administration before I do anything. This ordinance gives me some leeway in the next couple months as things happen, but I, I'm not going to cut anybody's budget without them knowing about it and without the approval of the administration.
Thank you. All right. If we're ready, then all, we have a motion and second now for approval of Ordinance 7620. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Okay. 7720 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 13519, reallocating revenues from the city income tax and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. And this is the last of the ordinances that deal with our budget emergency, and it's looking directly at our income tax allocations. And I'll go ahead and read through all, all of this because I feel it's very important and it's also very informative for anyone who's not exactly sure how we allocate money from the income tax. Basically, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 07720.
Second. A second from Councilmember Kotsas, okay. Well, we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. As I said, this ordinance will help citizens and everyone understand exactly how we allocate the income taxes that we rely on so heavily. And basically, what it's asking is that we, we allocate 1% more of those income taxes that we collect to the General Fund, and that 1% comes from a fund called the Transportation Assistance Fund. And as the previous ordinance, two ordinances ago indicated, one of the reasons our transportation fund lines are solid is because HAPCAP has done such a nice job getting grants for some of the pieces, the Athens Public Transit, that, that City Council supports. So we're able to move this 1% from the Transportation Assistance Fund into the General Fund. But I'll go ahead and read this ordinance. Section 1, effective July 1, 2020, section 1 of Ordinance 13519 is hereby amended to read as follows. That revenues from the city income tax, after a reduction of 5.41% for the Street Rehabilitation Fund 572, and 5.41% for the Arts, Parks and Recreation Debt Fund 450, and 2.7% for payment of expenses associated with the Recreation Community Facility Fund 271, as required under tax levies, shall be allocated directly to funds as followed. A, we would like to change the amount that goes to the General Fund from 73% to 74%. B, 18% to Street Fund 220 stays the same. C, 5% to Recreation Fund 270 stays the same. D, 3% to Capital Improvements Fund 580 stays the same. And E, we would like to remove from this ordinance at this time, and that is the 1% to Transportation Assistance Fund 214. And this, this also has an emergency clause, simply stating that this is an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the City of Athens in order to maintain fiscal integrity, and that it shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve 07720.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Claude Felter. So we have a motion and second. Do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Thank you. We'll now move on to a resolution for a third reading. This is a resolution to place the issue of renewing the existing city income tax of 10 hundreds of a percent, .10%, per annum for a period of 10 years, beginning January 1, 2021, on the ballot at the next general election on November 3, 2020, and directing the Board of Elections of Athens County to conduct the election and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Kotsas.
President Isley, thank you. I'd like to make the motion to adopt R 0520.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Crowell, okay.
Great. Thank you. And this is, so since council has approved Ordinance 06720, putting a levy request on the ballot in November, we now have yet another reason to show up and vote. But moving forward, this resolution is basically the interface with, with the Board of Elections, instructing them to, the language that will be on the ballot, which shall be, shall be, shall the ordinance 06720 providing for 10 hundreds percent, 0.1% levy on, on income for a period of 10 years commencing January 1, 2021, for the purpose of renewing an existing 10 hundreds percent, .1% levy on income, for the purpose of paying for street improvements in the City of Athens be passed. And that is what we will be reading on the ballot come November.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of this resolution. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the resolution is approved. We now have a one-reading resolution, R 820, a resolution requesting the mayor and other elected officials to institute a hiring freeze until a position review has taken place. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, President Isley. As mentioned earlier, this is the last agenda item tonight that is focused on the city's financial situation due to the coronavirus pandemic. And this one-reading resolution is really a request to the mayor and to other elected officials to, to have as many eyes and as many conversations as possible when it comes to hiring. So the resolution simply says, whereas the city council believes all vacant positions should be carefully reviewed prior to filling, filling in order to alleviate any need for a reduction in force, while at the same time recognizing that some vacant positions will, by necessity, be advertised and filled. Section 1, the mayor and other elected officials are hereby requested to institute a hiring freeze until a position review has taken place. This policy shall remain in effect until December 31, 2021. And I'd like to make a motion to approve R 0820.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Grace, okay. We have a motion and second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Smedley?
I'll just share that, and I'm sure not telling the administration anything they don't already do, but just stressing how already do, but just stressing how, sorry, in any situation, hang on. Really, in any economy, it's best practice to evaluate any vacancy as an opportunity to evaluate what you can do with that position. Keep it, change it, eliminate it, and that sort of thing. And I'm sure that's something that we do already. But of course, now is especially sensitive time. And we'll just work together to make sure we're doing the best we can and keep the budget under control. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Reisner.
Yes. When these topics were discussed last week, didn't we also talk about not just hiring freezes, but wage freezes?
I can address that, President Isley, if you'd like.
Sure.
So, you're right, Member Reisner. We did also talk about wage freezes. But I received the information that the wage freeze would only apply to non-union employees. And that compensation is already set for the year. So, it would, in effect, not have a lot of meaning.
Well, I don't want to argue the point with you, but when it comes to contract negotiations, a contract that has not been negotiated and has not been approved, anything is game. Often, our negotiators come to council with things like, what is the sense of council about a certain wage increase, a certain percentage over three years? It would seem to me that before a contract with any entity is negotiated, council should at least state that, if at all possible, that to be explained, that wages may not be able to, for at least a year, to be increased. I think it would be necessary for both parties to go into negotiations, realizing, guys, money just ain't there. So, I'm not quite sure how that falls with your argument that only the non-union bargaining people would be affected.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you there.
Well, let's bring it up again some other time.
For the auditor.
Let's get this one over with and we'll talk about it.
Right. And this is a one-reading resolution right now. And I, yeah, if that would want to be considered later than the committee, the finance committee.
No, it's just that I was under the impression that the resolution that was coming up tonight was going to cover that topic. And now I find out that it didn't. So, I'm informed.
Okay. Any other, yes, Council Member Claude Felter.
I don't know if this has been determined yet, but I just wonder if the general public would like to know who would be on the review board about, you know, those job positions and how that would be considered. Who would be in charge of that?
Mayor Patterson. Would be. And probably creation of the approval board.
Human resources.
I assume the department heads as well. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the comments and questions. All right, we have a motion and second for approval of R 820. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the resolution is approved. We have a few announcements and business to take care of tonight, the first of which is the motion to accept the April 2020 credit card transactions, which have been distributed to council for review. Do we have a motion to accept these credit card statements?
So moved.
Council Member Fall and seconded by Council Member Gray. Okay. Motion and second to accept these. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, nay. They have been
Aye.
Accepted. Okay. We will have three motions now for reappointments of persons on three of the different boards and our commissions with the city, the first one of which is the Historic Preservation Commission. And I think Council Member Reisner has that.
Well, I hate to say this. I'm totally unprepared for that.
Oh, well, it's for the reappointment of Cyrus Moore for four years and his expiration. The new expiration date would be June 9, 2024.
No, I guess I should read my email more often.
That's okay. That's all right. You're here. And if you would like to make the motion, that would be.
So moved.
Okay. And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, from Council Member Katsas, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion's approved. Council Member Claude Felter for the Recreation Advisory Board, reappointments.
Yes, I would like to put forward a motion to reappoint Alan Swank, Dan Brown, and Travis Gatling to the Arts, Parks, and Recreation Committee Advisory Board. They're all very good members.
Second.
Okay, motion, Council Member Fall, seconded. And these are all for two-year appointments. All those, we have motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Council Member Fall for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Ooh. Thank you. I would like to reappoint Aaron Thomas to the BZA, which is probably one of the hardest-working boards in all of the city. And they're very professional, and we love them. Thank you. I move that we do that.
Second.
Second by Council Member Claude Felter.
Thomas.
Okay, reappointing Aaron Thomas for three years as an alternate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, unanimously approved. And thanks to all of them for their service on these different commissions and boards. There's just no way we could get all this work done without their help. So, it's critical. Okay, we do have, we will have committee meeting next week. And so, if persons, the chairs could let our Clerk of Council, Debbie Walker, know by Wednesday, if you have a committee that needs to meet, or if you know tonight, you can tell us. Well, you'll let Debbie know by Wednesday. That would be great. Thank you so much. We now have an opportunity. Oh, are there any other announcements that people would like to make? Yes, Council Member Claude Felter.
I would just like to say that yesterday I participated in a very peaceful protest against the police brutality in Minneapolis. And there were two police officers who did an excellent job of talking to the crowd, because two of the members, or two of the participants, were kind of in the middle of Court Street, holding big signs up. And I was so afraid they were going to get run over. And those policemen really calmly talked to those, I think they were both OU students, really talked to those students. And I found out later, one of the students told me that those police were saying, look, we agree with you. This is an important protest. You have every right to be here. We want to help you with this, but we just want you to be safe. So, please come back to the sidewalk because we don't want anyone crazy to run over you. And then those police came over. Apparently, one of the students challenged them to actually stand with us. And those two police came over and held a big sign up that said Black Lives Matter. And I just, I was really impressed by how they communicated with the students and the fact that they held up that sign. And a lot of the students took their pictures. And I just, if I may so, I just felt very proud of the Athens police at that point. And those two officers, if I may recognize them by name, were Officer Holter and Officer Flick. And I intend to tell Chief Pyle about that as well. But it was one of the best examples of calm policing and de-escalation of a potentially tense situation that I've seen.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for that, sharing the information. Okay. All right. If we don't have any other announcements or comments, then I'd like to give an opportunity for any citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. And I'm not seeing, Scott Thompson has not conveyed to me that anybody who's panelist is interested in speaking. So, that said, if I could have a motion for adjourning or meeting?
So moved.
Council Member Grace, seconded by
Second.
Council Member Crowe. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, we stand adjourned at 8:01 PM, and we'll see you next week.
Everybody, take care.
Toodle-oo.